21st, 2022, at 5:02, I'm calling the Granby Planning Board into session. First item on the agenda, minutes, do we have minutes to? Correspondence Town Administrator. Zoning bylaws. Has anybody on the board had a chance to read this?
I read it. Cathy passed it around.
I skimmed it, yes.
Ken?
I did read it.
So, I'm just, just give me a minute here if you will. So evidently someone petitioned the town to change our cultivating license. So I'll just read the letter from Chris Martin. Dear Planning Board members, At the October 26th, 2022 meeting, the Select Board, of the Select Board, a petition article was submitted for inclusion on the next special town meeting warrant. At the November 7th, 2022 meeting of the Select Board, the Board of Registers indicated that they would not certify the required number of signatures for inclusion of the article on the next special town meeting warrant for the town of Granby bylaws. While it was, while it was, while it will not be on the warrant, the Select Board wanted to inform the Planning Board the proposed article as it pertains to the town Granby zoning bylaws. The proposed article reads as follows. To allow cannabis micro businesses defined as the cultivation of less than 5,000 square feet and the extraction process, processing not to exceed 2,000 pounds per year on land zone general business in the town of Granby. While the petitioner did not have enough signatures at this time, the Board desires the Planning Board to address the potential town of Granby zoning bylaw change and inform the Select Board of your findings and decisions regarding the petitioned article. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Chris Martin. So what does that, what does that actually mean? What are they looking for us to do?
That's a question I have as well. When we put together the cannabis cultivation, dispensary, retail, we tried to be selective in where we put, where we would allow these primarily cultivation places to avoid neighbors, that kind of stuff. But it was stated during this whole time that we were looking at creating bylaws. As Jim stated so eloquently at one meeting, this is a living, growing thing that nobody knows anything about and we may have to make changes as we move forward. The unfortunate thing in my mind is we have no cultivation in the town right now other than private for their own use, which is allowed by Mass General Law. I don't know that we should be looking at this until we, we get some kind of feedback or we see how a commercial grow is going to operate and what concerns are going to be brought up that we will have to address in the future.
Okay. I think the biggest thing is that we're just mindful that it's, you know, certain feet away from churches, schools, organizations, but exactly what they're trying to amend, you know, exactly what they're trying to amend.
So if I recall correctly, our bylaw only allows it in the industrial zoned area.
That is correct.
How much industrial zoning do we have in Granby?
You'd have to look at the zoning maps, but it's, it's located in one location. It's not scattered throughout town. And basically it's off New Lando Road and in between, it's off of 202 and New Lando Road, basically the dump.
Okay.
And some areas around there.
And up to South Street isn't.
No. That's industrial. The area that Bob's referring to that goes to South Street is the business overlay on the, I guess we call that the south side.
The south side.
South side of New Lando Road. And one of the, recalling some of the discussion on that was that state, state bylaw requires it to be a secured facility. So what exactly does that mean? We interpreted it as being an indoor facility, like a large secured greenhouse. And the other thing was growing cannabis has an odor to it, strong, a strong odor to it. And it wasn't something that we thought you'd want in a residential area, especially when you're talking, you know, these, these amounts.
Or in the general business area.
Or in the general, yeah, the downtown general business area, sure. So it's my feeling, unless we're petitioned to, to look at it, I think what we've done for the zoning purposes, what we have today stands. Unless we're petitioned to, to review it again. And they didn't get the signature, so I don't, I don't know why we were going to do that. Unless there was some sort of, just let me finish a minute. Unless there was some sort of new technology that came out and it was, it was presented to us that, you know, for the reasons that the Board determined it shouldn't be in any other area, then I don't see any reason to, to review it and look at it again.
And we also have to remember that when all these, when the Planning Board brought to town meeting all the new cannabis bylaws, the ones that passed were passed by a two-thirds majority.
What can bring good revenue into the town also?
I don't know on cultivation. Because the tax, I thought the tax was only on the retail end of it.
There is, there is, there is a revenue that does come to the town if the town passes certain bylaws, it's usually up to 3% on both cultivation. There's a transactional type revenues that, that kind of accrue. I think as you mentioned, you know, in reviewing that, and I did see that, your bylaw is very specific as to where cultivation and operation of the processing type facilities are to be located in addition to where retail is, is to be located.
Yeah, two totally different.
Yeah, two very different.
Different parts as far as retail cultivation.
I think, you know, the question that you bring up with whether or not the Board wants to take this on as a, as a response to the Select Board asking you to is, is something I was just quickly trying to look at with regards to how zoning petitions are initially made. As you mentioned, typically if there is a bylaw or a proposed bylaw that is, has a petition that is certified by the town clerk, the Planning Board would be required to have a public hearing. I'm trying to see whether or not based on the request by the Select Board in that itself as an entity, to ask the Planning Board to have a public hearing requires you to have a public hearing. But that's, that's what I was, that's the question. Obviously cannabis has evolved over the past couple of years. We understand some of the impacts, we understand some of the revenues. And I'm actually working with a couple of communities in trying to navigate some of the new regulations that they're trying to amend in their zoning. Yeah, I think it's a question for the Planning Board. I'm trying to find whether or not this is something that, if you want to continue to pursue and have a public hearing, obviously you can.
But with that said, I wouldn't be opposed to having a hearing to see if there, there has been any advances or anything that we, we could learn from it that may sway us differently than what we've, we've presented to the town in the past, I guess I'd be okay with that. But, and back to your point about revenue, if they build a secured facility, that would be taxable?
Right, exactly. And then there's additional revenue streams, I believe, also. So it's something to consider. And I think we just need to probably table it for now and see exactly if we have to have a public hearing, doable as Select Board versus.
Well, this, so this is what the, I was looking for the particular clause that cites what the Planning Board can do. Is this adoption or change of zoning ordinances or bylaws may be initiated by the submission to the City Council or Board of Selectment of a proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw by a, by a City Council, a Board of Selectment, a Board of Appeals by an individual owning land to be affected by change or adoption by a request of registered voters of a town pursuant to the Section 10 of Chapter 39, by 10 registered voters in the city, by a planning board, by a regional planning agency, or by other methods provided by municipal charter. So I think the requests coming from the Select Board, as it didn't necessarily pass muster with regards to the petition that, that memo states, would suggest that the Planning Board should have a public hearing to have this discussion of a possible.
We're required to do that, I guess.
Yeah.
When I reread this, this last paragraph. So I'm not opposed to getting more information and getting educated on anything that may be new from the time we, we originally looked at it. So let's take a look.
What I may suggest is to, your bylaws, I mean, there's only four clauses in that particular section. I don't know if there was a reason to make it simpler or acknowledge that the state has a large component of the regulatory nature of that particular use. But maybe it is worth examining the totality of your bylaw and whether or not you want to amend further in addition to addressing that issue.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing is that the bylaws that we created haven't been utilized in any way shape or form here in Granby.
Right.
No, but it's not to say we can't learn from other communities.
That is true.
That have, that have allowed it. But, and I think, I know who the petitioner was and I, I don't think they're looking to change the bylaws other than the zoning to allow it somewhere other than the industrial or the overlay zone.
Well, I would, I would suggest that, that particular clause that's in that, to allow cannabis micro business would be a specific clause in the bylaw. So it would be an additional clause because micro businesses are not necessarily addressed in your bylaw. Because that's a very specific cannabis establishment. So the suggestion to look overall at your bylaw and maybe, you know, just take a look at where you may be understanding that you haven't had, you know, cannabis business come to Granby, knowing you will permit it, that it could be an opportunity to look either cast a wider net or understand, you know, some of the limitations that your current bylaw may, you know, provide. But I think what I can do for a future meeting before scheduling a public hearing is maybe having a workshop on cannabis and, you know, understanding some of the impacts that are surrounding your community to see, you know, whether or not an amendment is, you know, worthwhile.
Or multiple amendments.
Or multiple amendments, right.
Why don't we do that? We've attempted to compile some stuff and as Melissa said, we'll table it for now.
Table it for now and then, I mean, even if we want to call other communities as part of the Board and just kind of get some more information on our own as well as what Ken can bring to the table. So there are a lot of other small communities that are allowing this.
Well, that's, that's primarily how our bylaws were created, by looking at a lot of similar communities size wise to create our bylaws. We use some of their stuff as templates and adjust it here and there.
Okay, so that being said, we'll table it. Ken will get us, get us some more information on it and we'll schedule a workshop either before or after or a separate, a separate date from our normal, our normal meetings. Excuse me. Depending on how much information there is to go over. Okay, new business. We have an A and R for Stephen Carpenter of West State Street, review application for completion. Is that what this here is?
All we're looking to do is separate the parcel from, from parcel in the back. We, over the years, have had people interested in the potential of buying this one.
Be aware of this, Melissa.
They're not really interested in this one as a, as a general rule. We do have some potential personal uses that we may do ourselves with it. So what we're trying to do is get the two separated so that we can market this one and hopefully find a decent buyer for it for town of Granby. And if someone wanted to buy this one as well, then great. If they didn't, then we'd still have the ability to market that one.
Six point three acres here, so that wraps around?
Yeah, it does wrap around. This was way back when the Englands still owned it and the Street Lumber owned all of this. The goal was to make an access from 202 back to this property if ever required. This, at this point with the new wetlands laws and stuff, it probably would never, would never work anyway. But back in 1958, that was the thought process.
So you've got 227.
It should come out to.
518?
Yeah. It should come out to just over 300 feet between ends here and this, I forget, was this 55, 55 feet? I know they require 40. We wound up making this little jog with Mass Granby to alleviate some potential legal issues. It seemed cheaper to do that than to go through, go to court with them and establish.
What's the, do this bylaw, so 55?
55. And it narrowed down to 30 feet at this point.
Was it Res. A?
No, it's business. We rezoned.
Ah, okay.
And re, I shouldn't say we rezoned. We changed the bylaws as far as estate business lots a couple of years ago. You're aware of that, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're, why we're doing that. Otherwise I don't think it would have been, even been an option. Rather than right now, we still have the 40 feet. You can do a commercial back here, the business with the 40.
You could do multiple businesses back there. With 80 feet. So that's all you're looking to do?
All we're looking to do is, we've got nothing specific. I think if this, this portion on the market, and very least.
Is this thing paid for?
Was it, we have not. She said I, she, I just tried to give Cathy a check and she said pay him at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So I do not have not paid yet.
Wait until, wait until we vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Does everybody understand what? So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the A and R submitted for the Street Lumber Corporation dated September 30th, 2022.
You have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now you can write the check out.
7:25, good?
Yep, yep. Starting off with the my.
Leave that copy for Steve. No, he doesn't get mixed up in the owner's stuff.
So 221, correct.
Give me five minutes, I'll switch spots.
Thanks. Just checking.
You got a stamp?
No.
All that?
Ken, you have these?
Do we have a, you know, the rubber band?
There's a bag of.
You won't need them?
If this were the, uh.
Okay. Thank you. There you go, sir. Thank you.
Nice, that slide over. All right, next on the agenda. New business, 220 West State Street, special permit site plan review. Review applic, this is to review applications for completion. And this is for 220 West State Street. Kim's Pet Resort LLC. I know we looked at this a while ago. Two more cases.
Yep.
Ken, you want to? Ken, you went over the application, right? Do you have any questions, concerns?
The initial concern is I, I did send an email to the chair prior to the last meeting. That was specific to whether or not the zoning enforcement officer had made a determination based on a previous use. This is in the Village Center zone and based on the use table, which at least for a layperson reading the application, my suggestion is that it's a veterinary establishment, pet care type based on this use, which in the use table is not a permitted use in the Village Center. So that was my initial observation. However, if there was a determination made by the zoning enforcement officer, whether or not this conversation, you know, for a site plan review or a special permit application is specific to this particular use, I wasn't aware. But based on an initial observation, that was the fight.
I think it's a stretch to call it a veterinary institution.
You're...
I mean, no diagnosis is being done, I don't believe, or prescriptions or the only care is really just the washing and grooming cats and dogs.
Yeah, if we have a cat there, we have to feed it and take care of it, or dog stays for the day, we have to take it for a walk, but we're not doing any sort of... Anytime we have a questionable issue with a pet, we tell them to take them to a vet. We're definitely not veterinarians.
The, so the use table says veterinary establishment place for boarding animals or raising pets for gainful purpose. That's the only use that mentions anything about veterinary uses or animal uses.
So can you state your name and address for the board? Kim Goldsmith, 239 Village Street, 202. Okay, so can you say, like, can you just let us know, like, a quick synopsis of, like, what your business entails? Yeah, so I had been here a while ago and I printed up, I don't know if you've got it, I don't think you were here at the time, but everybody had gotten a copy of kind of what my idea was to do there. Basically, you know, I have a new chalk and counter already in a very small location. At some point, I would like to move the whole operation over there. At first, at this building, I was just going to kind of start with cats. It's two floors, so I was going to have the cats on one floor and the dogs on another. A lot of complaints with customers, they don't like their cats near dogs. So, you know, possibly, I was asking the board if, you know, we needed to have a cat stay over for the night, why the family treated the house for fleas or something like that, we could do that. We do get a lot of requests for dogs to stay for the entire day, where people drop off before work and pick up after. So I was going to do maybe like a little bit of, like a doggy daycare for customers, basically. But no sort of like kennel boarding, I'm not going to put up any fences outside or anything like that. Everything's going to be contained within the building. So it won't change the outside structure of the building or property at all. So it's only during business hours? Correct. Okay. So it's definitely not veterinary care?
No.
No, I wouldn't.
I, I believe that initially, we gave Ken the go-ahead with this.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
It's been so long.
It was basically you guys needed a site plan and it took a while to get the well receptive and everything done and then they had to go and redo the site plan again, so it's just been a lot of time.
Yeah, and the only real conversation I remember is maybe something about parking and handicap or something like that.
We put a ramp in, we put a ramp in, we did that, the lighting, we did the lighting. I think those were the only two major requests that you guys at the time had asked of us.
Yeah.
Okay, as, as Ken mentioned, it doesn't allow veterinary establishment place of boarding animals or raising pets for gainful purpose. So this is, this is a different service. It falls under services. Residential, not required. Not required.
It's in the Village Center.
Village Center, so it does require a site plan.
A special permit.
A special permit. If I recall, recall, the first time you came, you came before us, our concerns were about, as I mentioned, parking. You thought you were going to need 11 parking places, I think you said, something like that? Or you were going to have 11?
Yeah, but I think they put mine in the site plan for now. They said that we could extend some of the... I don't know, you have to talk to my husband more about that. I'm not familiar with the site plan or...
So with, with that being said, I, I think we just move forward with the, the application for a special permit site plan approval by the planning board, unless a public hearing.
Public hearing.
From what I can see here... So the rest of the application would be the butters list? Would have to go up to the butters?
We did do all that. Kathy just said that you guys have questions for me. Well, we did do the butters list, you have to add. Okay, so I guess the next thing is just a public hearing? So she asked about it.
So we'll, we'll, we'll send Kathy an email or a letter stating that we're, we're ready to proceed with this, with the special permit here.
I have to tell us a public hearing. Will that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, 138 West State Street, special permit review.
Great friend with sign techniques, Chicky, 361 Chicky Street. I'm here to, actually Kathy's abstaining to me, you just had some questions for me. So I did her a new sketch with the existing sign. I believe you have that as well. No changes. But she said you have some questions. I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, the question, the, what came up was this was supposed to be an internally lit, which is not allowed.
Right.
And what you're showing here is a...
It would be an external light.
You're showing, you're showing lights down here at it.
Because they're existing. I could press the mouse, we're going to remove them.
And this is going to be a...
Internally lit. But if we can't do that, we still have to eliminate it externally, just as the existing sign is, because I paid attention on that one here.
This bylaw, it drives me crazy.
Well, what we ended up doing for Dollar General was they met the criteria size-wise and we went with an externally lit, or they went with an externally lit. That's the most recent one to my knowledge.
So, yeah, the initial comment, when I had the opportunity to review that, and it sounds as if there is a conversation possibly to externally lit light, but was that the bylaw does allow for it, as, you know, as Bob mentioned with regards to the Dollar General, there is a size requirement in the general business zone, which I believe is 25 square feet at maximum for a extern, internally lit sign. And it would go through a special permit and site plan approval process. However, I know that the board, with regards to the business on, right as you enter town, there was a replacement of a sign that the board permitted in size if it was similar to that sign, because it was a change of business.
Was that for 413 Dumpster?
Yes. There was, that was a replacement of a sign.
That's not, the sign that's there now is not internally lit.
No, 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 no.
It's tough in size.
But it, the similar size and however it was lit, was lit. And I understand that the conversation possibly could include keeping the sign as is, but externally lighting. However, I think the bylaw is very specific as to if you choose to go through the internally lit route, the maximum size is 25 square feet.
How does your client feel about having it exteriorly, ex... Exterially lit? Lit externally? I think it's something they're willing to, to do, because he's aware, they're aware of the bylaws. I suppose you're willing to work with them, I appreciate your time and energy to do that. But I did ask them if he'd be willing to keep it externally lit and he said yes. I do know that the sign is smaller than what is there. And I mean, in my opinion, if he already, if there's a, if there's external lighting already there and they're agreeable to external lighting, then we just go that route. However, I mean, so the bylaw says that they can't internally light because it's, this, this sign would be too large, correct?
Correct.
For a freestanding sign in the general business zone, your bylaw says if lighted, it shall be illuminated internally or by indirect method with white light only.
Okay, and what's the dimensions?
The dimension said said ground sign does not exceed a height of 20 feet, nor have a surface area greater than 25 square feet, though the board may require a lesser height or size.
The only way to do, actually, they're both the same size.
10 by...
10 by 4?
Yeah, just round.
Different shape, but...
Based on the bylaws, I'm in favor of allowing the sign, the size that she's proposing as long as it's externally lit.
I think that's fair. I think that's more than fair. I agree. As long as it's within the white light and...
Do we have time set on that?
No, we typically don't. I'd rather see, we, we did on that, that we, because of the input some of the mayors had on, because that was new. But I don't, I don't see any reason, I'd rather see them lit. I'd rather see this lit all night long rather than not.
Right. I agree with that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
Essentially, it being a storage facility.
It's open 24/7 too, isn't it?
Right.
Oh, it's not open 24/7?
No.
6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. are his access hours. Okay.
Either way.
But still at night.
Still at night. I'd rather see it lit.
Yeah, me too.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the sign as, as presented with externally lit.
External illumination.
I'll make a motion to approve this, this sign for local storage group. What's the address? 220?
138 West.
138 West State. To approve it as submitted, with the exception that it must be externally lit.
With a condition, it must be externally lit. Do we have, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That would be the building inspector. Pardon me, Greg Briggs, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you thank her?
You as well.
You as well. We don't even have you on the agenda. But anyway.
Really?
Really.
Yeah.
Is this 10?
No.
Who are you supposed to be, who are you supposed to be seeing? Conservation?
So it's 10B West, West State? 10B?
Board of Health.
That's the senior center.
Senior board of that.
The select board is meeting right now.
That's who you must be seeing at the select board.
Head that direction down 202, just before you get to the town line, it's on the left-hand side.
So senior center?
There's a sign that says senior center.
Yeah, it says Granby Senior Center. All right.
Sorry about that.
Good luck.
Five also, right?
I'm not sure, I think they're timed. Yeah, but they might.
Okay.
They might be on time. Any further discussion for tonight?
So with regards to the cannabis workshop, when would you like to, like, work towards? You want to do that?
After the holidays.
After the holidays? Okay, very good.
Any information you have prior to then, just forward along?
I think the other conversation is specific to... At your next meeting, I'll have a bill and minutes. But the, the decision tonight with regards to the sign, your decision was to basically allow for the replacement of the existing sign?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's captured correctly because the, the suggested application suggests that they're going through that process, but I think what probably needed to happen was a conversation with the zoning enforcement officer, Greg Briggs, to make the determination that it was just a replacement of sign, whether or not he would, he would have turned it back to the planning board to confirm that.
That's why he sent, that's why...
Okay, so has that already happened?
That, that's why he sent it to us.
Okay. Yeah, I was just unsure, like, the, the flow of information to...
There was no lapse in business. It was, it was just a transfer.
Perfect.
A change in the name.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.